As amended and adopted May 3, 2022. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 85360615590 and password 552896 or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email City Department, City Council. Will everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you. We'll have a moment of silence and I guess I'm just thinking of someone whose child is really ill and hopefully will be undergoing some cancer treatment far from home and if we could all keep anybody who we know are in situations like that in our thoughts, I think it might really help this evening. Minutes 22-334-01. Ordered to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday. Oh, I forgot the roll call, sorry guys. See, in this case, you can interrupt me. Point of order, I forgot to mention that, you can feel free. So first we'll do the roll call. And you will respond with present. Counselor Termath.
Present.
Counselor Brink.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I'm Anne Marie Mastrocchio, Mayor of the City of Sanford, and this evening we're joined with Stephen, by Stephen Buck, City Manager, and Sue Cody, who is substituting for Larissa Ricketson. Thank you, Sue, for agreeing to come back and do this this evening. Now we will do the minutes. 22-334-01. Ordered to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, June 21, 2022. I think Counselor Hanselman would like to make this motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes with an adjustment or amendment to state that I attended the meeting remotely via Zoom.
Thank you.
Under attendance.
So the motion is to approve them as amended? Is there a second? Counselor, Deputy, oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second that motion.
So we have a second by the Deputy Mayor. A motion, a second, any more discussion? As amended? All those in favor, please raise your hands. That is a unanimous vote. Mayor's report, City Council Subcommittee Reports. I don't think we have any City Council Subcommittee Reports. If there are none, I just have a short report, but I have to find it. Here I am. Okay. I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Department, Police, Fire, Public Works, all the people that took to, for all the work that goes into putting on a July 4 weekend celebration that was fun and safe. We had great weather for the water ski show, fireworks and parade, and people seemed to be having a really good time. I'd also like to thank Deputy Mayor Hurley and Counselor Hanselman for purchasing the candy that they and Counselor Stackpole handed out to all the big and little kids along the parade route. I was fortunate to have former City Councilor Joe Hanslip as my chauffeur, and it was such a great experience to have my grandsons Michael and Max ride along with me. They loved that people actually waved back, and they particularly enjoyed being in charge of the candy. It was a pretty perfect weekend all around, so I just thought it was really important to take note of our first Fourth of July parade in a few years. Anybody have anything else? Then I will move on to the City Manager's report. Steve, it's all yours.
Thank you. The first item I'd like to present on here this evening is the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We've received our second of two payments, so we have our full amount now. It's slightly amended higher than what was originally anticipated, but we have the full Those are in the bank, so to speak. I've put a graph in here showing this year's first year utilization in there, as far as the utilization of that $2.2 million. And you can see there's an investment in a substance abuse mental health counselor within the police department, the rehiring of two dispatchers for the dispatch center, high-quality affordable housing, an amount of $300,000 to be used as a continuously renewable revolving loan fund, broadband to underserved, there's a total amount of $200,000, but $50,000 allocated at a minimum for the first year. Improving outdoor spaces, that is the CIP project for Carpenter Park at $95,167. The property purchase at $585,000 under the fire department. Disproportionately impacted populations for the fire stations. Training for dispatch center at $45,180, as well as a $10,000 amount when we bring on a certified dispatcher that needs additional eight weeks of training to clear. And then backfill within the fire department for paramedic training and advanced EMT training and $50,167, as well as academy training of one non-blue pin officer, $40,800. So $1.4665,000 in the first year of utilization. I also put a press release in there that came from the State of Maine Department of Financial Services that talks about the total amount that came, is coming to Maine, 119.2 million in total to Maine communities. Employment and/or employee status. I put quite a bit of detail in here. I just want to give you an example of what it is that I deal with with our Human Resource Department on a weekly basis. The continuous and ongoing process as labor shortages continue to persist here within the region, as we see the private sector and other communities really putting money behind various positions that makes it very difficult to compete as far as employment is concerned. So new positions that have recently come on board, there are 12 of these, 10 are new to us, completely in two or internal movements. We had Sandra Knapp come on as a temporary file clerk within the code department, replaced the loss of the administrative position in there on a temporary basis. I have Kerrigan Doe, a dispatcher, has come into the dispatch center. Stephen Hanselman, a seasonal park laborer. Richard Southwick, a seasonal airport laborer. David Eldridge, a seasonal park laborer. Keith McBride, our new economic development director. Martin Lovassar, a seasonal park laborer. Hunter Lord, a seasonal park laborer. Michael Termath came on as our new city counselor. He had to be onboarded by our HR department. Matt Johns, police officer, returning back to us. He's going to be assigned as our new traffic, as part of the, no, I'm sorry, not the traffic division. He's coming in as part of the workforce. And then we had two internal movements. Ray Davis, he's coming out of the environmental services, out of the transfer station, going back to being an equipment operator four. And Tom Gilman, who wasn't EO1, is being promoted to an equipment operator three. We had 30 new election workers brought on in the same period of time and onboarded, and we had 50 seasonal employees within the recreation department brought on and onboarded during this time period. We currently have in the hiring and/or interview process 17 positions. That would be a dispatcher, there's three of those, that's non-certified. We have seven multiple, you know, police officers, non-certified. We have seven positions that are open to be filled. We have a tractor trailer driver, public works, there's one position there. This is a prime example. We had this position hired. CDL1, Class A CDL. Interviewed, extended the offer, accepted the offer, background check complete, driver's license check complete, medical testing complete, onboarded with the pre-employment physical complete. Employment date, start this week. No. Current employer offered more money and a benefit package to the individual first time, no longer coming. That's a weekly occurrence for us. Go through all of those processes, you have somebody onboard, they have a start date, and then they call and notify us. I was offered more, right? Let's see. EO5, Public Works, that's at the transfer station because of an internal movement. EO4, we still are short two positions within the Public Works Department. The Assistant Fire Chief, we have an ore board process scheduled, the first round of that has been scheduled, and the second round has been scheduled for later in the month as well. The Assistant Planner, this has been open for 18 months now, either an assistant planner or a full planner. I don't want to jinx anything, I'm knocking on wood, over here, we did make an offer today that was accepted. I'm still holding my breath, but it is for a full planner, 10 years of experience, so I'm hoping that the details work themselves out. If so, that person will start for us on August 1. And they have not yet started interviewing, but the ore board process and the ore board has been sent up for the mental health first responder to go into the police department for the first time. Then there are an additional 17 positions that have yet to be advertised, that's in the process of being advertised and starting that very adjuvant process. We have that for certified, a certified police officer and non-certified police officers, certified dispatchers and non-certified dispatchers, reserve dispatchers, equipment operator one in highway, and equipment operator split between highway and airport, equipment operator one split between highway and parks. One of those two positions have been offered out more than once, accepted and then turned back. Equipment operator one, transfer at Public Works, mechanic two in the Public Works Department, seasonal labors in the Public Works. We received no applications at all for those positions this year. Still short of lifeguards, still short of a couple of camp counselors, and we are now looking for a new administrative assistant in code enforcement, as well as two firefighter EMT or advanced EMT and/or paramedics within the fire department. All of these positions can be found on the city's website, so I bring that up just to show the continuous workload that's on our HR department, and I'll be coming back to you to talk to you about some potential fixes as far as addressing what's going on there. They do an exceptional job working with our new communications coordinators as far as when we take the specialized positions. Jordan will for us drill down into various educational institutions that have that specific area of expertise, so we're getting that out aside from, you know, the LinkedIn postings, the Indeed, the various other job banks, the typical Maine Municipal Association and the multi-state municipal organizations. So they make best efforts to get that out as broadly as possible. I also put in here an announcement, the York County Community Action expanded their transportation bus lines, they did a press release on that on June 27th, so I put that information in here, hopefully raising further awareness to the public that the Orange Line has been expanded. Put a report in here on the Orange Line, summer schedule is expanded hours, and it has a more regular schedule that's been specifically designed for employment purposes, getting people around to their jobs to and from the coast and also in here to Sanford. Sanford Net Fiber, the EDA grant closeout. After two-plus years of working with the Economic Development Administration through COVID, they closed their offices, they still aren't back in their offices yet. They had lost and changes in staff, we've been through three project administrators with EDA in that time period. Last week, I finally signed the last of the documentation that's been sent. We received 90% of the payment, they're still withholding that 10% for closeout of $76,920. Kai, the new project administrator, he has given us the assurance that everything looks good. They should be able to sign off on that and return that last piece of money, and we will close out that EDA grant. And the last element here is we held meeting number 14 of the Mineral Extraction Task Force on the 29th of June. We have completed our work at this stage of the process. We've made amendments to Chapter 149, which is licensing, did a complete rewrite of Chapter 280, Section 15-6, and all of the definitions and relevant standards, to change the permitting and operations of mineral extraction from a five-year permit to a one-year license. So they'd go through the, they'd get a site plan the first time and operations manual attached to that site plan, and from that point forward indefinitely until the pit is fully exhausted and/or closed out, they would operate under a one-year license. So those draft ordinances have been completed. I'm bringing that to the City Council for the second meeting on July 19. I'll ask for your review and consideration on that. If there are no absolute game changers in there, then I would ask you to authorize us to push that forward to start the public process at the planning board level only on Chapter 280. So Chapter 149 licensing and Chapter 120 fees, that stays with the City Council and council only. Chapter 280, anything to do with your zoning has to be reviewed and a recommendation made by the planning board prior to your adoption of any amendments to Chapter 280. So I'd ask to start that process. The industry knows that there'll be an extensive process there of multiple workshops and public hearings at the planning board level, as well as when it comes back to the City Council with a planning board recommendation with or without amendments, there'll be a public hearing process pursuant to passage of an ordinance here, first and second read, with work in between as might be needed. The last thing I had in here is just a notice, the governor pushed out an order today to fly our flags at half-staff starting today through Saturday in honor, in remembrance of the victims of the Highland Park, Illinois' July 4 parade shooting. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions for the City Manager? Okay, thank you. Communications and presentations, there are none. Public participation for items that are not on the agenda, I didn't see anybody sign up. Anybody here in the audience, anybody on Zoom? I don't see anybody. Then I will say.
Is anybody at all on Zoom right now, Steve?
I don't have that showing. Ben, is there anybody on Zoom?
Nobody raising their hand?
There's about eight of us and no one is raising their hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I like that. Oh, I can see everybody that's there.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, public hearings, there are none. Consent agenda, there is no consent agenda this evening. There is no old business, so we will go to new business. And I can just tell you all that this is probably a relatively short agenda because Larissa was on vacation. Poor Larissa when she comes back. Ordered to accept a grant of ARPA funds through the Maine Emergency Management Agency to fund the purchase and installation of a generator for the airport operations, maintenance and administrative building at 9 Presidential Lane, at 9 Presidential Lane. So I think the airport manager, Allison Navia, is here this evening to present. Thank you. Go ahead, Allison.
Good evening, I'm Allison Navia. I'm the airport manager of our Sanford Secoast Regional Airport. I'm pleased to bring this before you tonight. Alex Hammerly and I worked together to be able to obtain this funding, so this was part of the ARPA funding that came through the Maine Emergency Management Agency. We had identified this as a desirable addition to the airport back when we designed the building back in 2017, 2018. So the building itself would be powered as well as Gate 8. Currently, if the power goes out at the airport, there's no backup plan to be able to open any of the gates that run on electricity, only the manual ones can open, so that would give us additional functionality if that would happen. The airport's emergency plan addresses aircraft incidents and accidents, bomb incidents, structure fires, including the fuel farms, natural disasters, hazardous materials incidents, sabotage and other unlawful interference, as well as power failures. All of these incidents would require use of that building at 9 Presidential Lane, and this generator will give us continuity in case of any power outages. We did have a pretty long power outage as a result of that bad hailstorm that happened a couple of years ago, and that was a perfect example of a time when this would have come really in handy. What had happened at that point was the storm came through and a couple of the power poles and the transformers had exploded, the woods were on fire, blocking off exit for the entire industrial park. So what we had to do was open one of the back gates and actually evacuate all of the employees down Taxiway Charlie and manually open our gate and hold it open so that they could all get out. So having this would really help with that. We didn't purchase the generator at the time when we built the building due to finance constraints, but we did bid it as an alternative, as an alternative in the bid in case that money did come available. So that came in handy because within the purchasing policy, it's already been through the bidding process, and we updated the bid price. So that's the funding breakdown that's part of this. The total grant was $78,550, so that includes the cost of the generator and the full installation. The generator will be run on natural gas, which is already piped to the building, and we run the building's heating system on natural gas, so that's an added benefit too because you wouldn't have to continuously refill it with diesel fuel throughout the duration of an emergency as well. So there's two items on the agenda tonight. The first is to accept the funding source, and then once the funding source is accepted, the next is to accept the contract with Martin O'Electric to be able to purchase and install it.
Thank you, Allison. Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Brink?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse, I have a hand down here. Counselor Termath?
Second.
Thank you. So that is a motion by Counselor Brink, a second by Counselor Termath. Is there any discussion by the council? Counselor Termath?
Let's have a quick question. So how many manual gates do we have currently at the airport?
There's 21 gates in total, and I believe five of them are electric. The remainder are all manual.
Any other questions? And Counselor Termath, if you just move your mic up just a little, you don't need to lean, and these things are amazingly sensitive, and if you get too close, then it actually, they can't hear you as well. I know that is counterintuitive to us to, there are some mics that we deal with that you actually have to get closer. These actually don't work if you're too close. And Ben will let us know if we are not close enough. Tell me, I am sure of that. So thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? That is a unanimous vote. Ordered to accept the updated proposal for Martin O'Electric for the purchase and installation of a natural gas generator for 9 Presidential Lane in the amount of $74,550. We've already had the explanation, so can we have a motion on the floor, and if there are any questions, we can go further? Counselor Martel?
No motion.
Is there a second? Counselor Brink?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor, by a show of hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Allison. 22-333-01. Ordered to approve the following license request. An application for a catering permit from Pilot's Cove Cafe, 199 Airport Road, Sanford, Maine, to serve spectators at the July 12, 2022 Sanford Mainers baseball game at Goodall Park, 38 Robert Street, Sanford. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Termath?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think it's pretty self-evident.
Yes, they are there for Partners Bank Night, so.
Oh, yes, it is, thank you. Okay, I just didn't know if it was, I'm sorry.
Of course it is.
All those in favor, by a show of hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. 22-342-01. Ordered to approve a resolution regarding the display of flags on city property as policy governing the display of flags. Steve, I'm going to let you present this first because you did just get the legal opinion so that you can, and I'm sure everybody's read the policy, so all we were really waiting for was the legal opinion that wasn't available on Friday.
So the legal opinion that came through, there was no legal findings as far as errors or omissions in the policy. She did multiple corrections of spelling errors and other formatting, because I put this together.
Thank goodness.
Very rapid fashion, without Larissa being here, so.
Would you just take us through the policy really quickly for the public?
I will. Yep, so the policy was written, if you look at this particular topic matter, as far as the display of flags on poles on government property, there was actually a Supreme Court decision on this just a few years back. So I went through that Supreme Court decision, looked at the national, the US Code Title IV, Chapter 1, for flying flags, looked at our Title 1, Chapter 9, has three different areas that addresses flying of the state flag and other flags. I also looked at the POW/MIA flag, the prisoner of war POW/MIA flag, as far as where it goes on the pole placement and such under that. Then pursuant to the SCOTUS decision, there were several elements that needed to go into a policy, is that by establishing a policy in compliance with the Supreme Court decision for a city council to fly a flag as an exercise of government speech, so that is incorporated in here. Two, that the policy is nondiscriminatory as far as this consideration of flying of flags. Three, that the policy conforms to the Establishment Clause, which provides for the separation of church and state. Four, that it does not promote or allow the promotion of any political party or political affiliation. And five, it also incorporates the previous, my previously referenced to the national as well as state codes. So looking at the flag policy itself, it states, whereas the city council desires to establish clear guidelines regarding the display of all flags flown on city-owned or city-maintained properties. And I think it's important to read this, it says, whereas in adopting this resolution, the city council declares that flag poles owned and maintained by the City of Sanford are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public, but rather a non-public forum for the display of any governmental and non-governmental flag authorized by the city council, either required by law or as an expression of the city council's official government speech. That's what the Supreme Court decision was all ruling on, was that, it was actually a case with the City of Boston. So the City of Boston had a flag pole in front of its municipal operations building that was a vacant, and virtually anybody could fly any flag up that pole without authorization and such under that. Or, I can't remember what the particular situation was, somebody was denied access to fly their flag on the pole, and that's where that entire case was started. And the Supreme Court said, in the absence of a policy, for the fact that the past precedent was that anybody without restriction was allowed to fly flags on that pole, that when they did do it a restriction, that was not allowed. If the City of Boston had established a policy such as this is, that would not have been an issue. And that it was not the flag pole itself that was owned and maintained by the government is not there as an expression of freedom of speech, but it is there to serve as government speech. And by the city council authorizing for certain flags to be flown there, it's an expression of government speech, not free speech. So also incorporated into this policy is the order, you know, the United States flag, the POW/MIA flag, and then the State of Maine flag, and that it be flown from top to bottom in that order. Took a little more research for me to confirm, but I found in several sources that if you're flying the POW/MIA flag in conjunction with the United States flag, it always goes below the United States flag unless there is a specific state law that requires the state flag to be flown below the US flag. Maine does not have that requirement. So that would be our order. And then if another flag is to be flown on the same pole as those three, then it would be flown below those three in that order. Okay. So then Section 3 covers the commemorative flag. It is establishing what a commemorative flag is, as an expression of the city council authorizing a display of commemorative flag to fly on a city-owned indoor-maintained property. It shall only, council shall only consider a request to display a commemorative flag if the request is made by a member of the city council. So that provides some level of limitation that, you know, someone would have to contact you, or you would have to ask for this for consideration, as opposed to just the public coming in and requesting at will. The decision to approve or deny a request to display a commemorative flag should be made at a publicly noticed council meeting in this format, and the commemorative flags shall be displayed for a period of time that is reasonable or customary for the subject that is to be commemorated typically seven days, but not more than 30 days. And the commemorative flags must be either purchased by the city or temporarily donated for the city's use, and must be clean without holes and tears, and be made of all-weather fabric. Commemorative flags must be the same size or smaller than the United States flag. If the flags are flying at half-staff for any reason, the commemorative flag is lowered accordingly. And then a commemorative flag is, as defined in this policy, shall mean a flag that identifies with a specific historical event, cause, nation, or group of people that the city council chooses to honor, to commemorate, consistent with the city's mission and priorities. The following are not allowed as commemorative flags and will not be considered by the city council. And this comes out of the Supreme Court decision. Flags of a particular religious movement or creed to avoid the appearance of city government endorsing religion, or a particular religious movement or creed pursuant to the Establishment Clause. Flags of a political party to avoid the appearance of city government endorsing a political party, and flags advocating a certain outcome in an election.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Actually, before we- Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Actually, before we begin discussion, I think I'm going to ask for a motion to approve. I see Counselor Stackpole's hand is up.
Move, reapprove.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. A second by Counselor Brink.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hands for questions for the City Manager or discussion? I don't see any. Then I guess I will call the vote. All those in favor? Show of hands. That is unanimous vote. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to go into executive session. I'm going to wait to do that because once we do, then we would be recessing the meeting to go into the other room. So I am going to go on to Councilmember Comments and future agenda items because we will not be coming back into public session after the executive session. So I will go to Councilmember Comments, and we'll start with Counselor Turmath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to say that public safety is definitely an important topic of mine, and, you know, talking about crosswalk safety and pedestrian safety is usually of the utmost importance, especially, you know, usually we talk about it during the school year. However, it's important to talk about it throughout the year as well because, you know, it's important that we maintain, you know, a proactive approach and not just a reactive approach in our city. When it comes to pedestrian safety, we have a lot of folks that get around by the means of walking on the sidewalks, and of course, our motoring public needs to have fair and enough warning to stop for any pedestrian in a crosswalk. So it's very important that we just keep this focus in the forefront of our mind, and that, I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Counselor Turmath. I just want to clarify for myself and for the City Manager, you would probably want to put that under a future agenda item, and if you want to have a discussion at public safety about sidewalk painting, I mean crosswalk painting, if that's what I'm assuming you're talking about, then I will ask the City Manager to do that under future agenda items. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Also, I did put that on the last council meetings, future agenda items as well.
Right. Well, we only have subcommittee meetings once a month, so that happened after the, so I'm sure it's already on there. So thank you.
Right, thank you.
Counselor Brink?
No comments.
Counselor Martel?
I'd just like to thank everyone for a great parade that we had on Monday. I did see some feedback around the fees for being in the parade, so I think I'd like to add that to a future agenda item if we could, just to discuss that.
Well, okay, I'll put that under, so that would have been, okay, that's fine. It's actually already on a subcommittee in the future for-
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, but I understand where you're coming from. There was a discussion.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanselman, comments?
Thank you. I just wanted to agree with others that have commented on the Great Fourth of July, and also recognize that it was our Parks and Rec Director's first big event, and I think he did a really fabulous job, and I was very appreciative of all of our city staff that really had our parks looking great and had it just a overall great event. So thanks to those folks.
Counselor Stackpole?
Once again, I had a blast walking in the Fourth of July Parade with the other counselors and passing out candy to the kids, and also many adults, surprisingly, asked for some pieces of candy. Tootsie Rolls and Tootsie Roll Pops were really popular, so that was great fun, and my pleasure to do that for the community.
Deputy Mayor Hurlahey?
I'll just mimic what everybody's been saying. It was a nice weekend, and I'm glad we had wonderful weather, and I think people in general were in great moods. And yes, it seems to be the seniors who say, you know, I've reached the point where I get candy, too, and I think that's, you know, we need to recognize that. But I saved all my lollipops for the teeny-tiny tots, because that's pretty much all they can have.
Okay, and I don't have any comments this evening. Future agenda items, you don't have to repeat what you've already said. Counselor Turmath, if you have anything else under agenda items?
Yes, also, I have one other thing besides the crosswalk pedestrian safety. If we can put it on for the Public Safety Committee, if we can take a look at getting the Chief of Police a vehicle, that would be appreciated.
Okay. We can discuss the vehicle status of the Chief of Police for sure. Counselor Brink, agenda items?
I think I've already asked about an update on our website, and a concern was if you go on the calendar on it right now, I would have expected to find all the Fourth of July stuff there, and it wasn't. So I'm just trying to think of how to make this more user-friendly until we get the new website.
Agreed. And I'll just, the City Manager and I did just have a discussion when we have our Goals Workshop at the end of August. I've asked that Jordan be there as well so that those are the kinds of things, because I have a feeling part of our, one of our goals is going to be increasing our communication level, so that I wanted to make sure that she would be able to hear that. So yeah, that's, and just as a reminder, everything that everyone said last two weeks ago, we just only have subcommittees once a month. So that's why we haven't had a subcommittee to discuss any of those things. So yes, it'll be on there. Counselor, all right, Brink. Martel?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. Two things. One, I'm still looking for an update on the comprehensive plan, and it may be that we just haven't made progress. And I know that right now our planning departments both understaffed and have people on vacation, so, but perhaps as we head into fall, that could be made a priority. And then question about our ability to clean up some of the overgrowth in Gateway Park near the dam, in part because of its appearance, but also there may be some issues with dam, you know, safety and integrity with some of the overgrowth that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanselman. Counselor Stackpole?
All set, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurlahey?
Just under Property Subcommittee, if we could have an update on where our priority list is for equipment and stuff like that. You know how we usually get an update every once in a while, cars, equipment, especially the Public Works stuff, what's on our top of our list, what has adjusted recently, because I'm sure there's some unforeseen things that have occurred. I'd love to get an update on that.
And you could include the Police Chief's car under property and maintenance, under operations and maintenance.
I can very, I can remember getting Chief Connolly a car. I'm assuming he just changed cars. He just passed it on.
Anyway, we'll have that discussion, and I want you all to be prepared for very robust subcommittee meetings because we will have these things on there, right, Steve?
Well, I just, Matt Hill is going to fall out of his chair when I say that they asked for a fleet management update, because it's usually, oh my, make him go away.
Yeah, that's kind of how I feel, but I just start to snore, but I'm sorry. That's just me. Okay, so I will, as long as we have no other comments or future agenda items. 22-344-01, ordered to enter into executive session to review and discuss a pending labor agreement, excuse me, between the City and the Sanford Regional Communications Association, Main Association of Police pursuant to MRS Title I, Section 405-6D. Mayor Hurlahey?
I'll make a motion that we go into an executive session, please.
Is there a second by Counselor Brink?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show of hands. That is unanimous. We are in executive session. We will see each other in the conference room.